Welcome to the October 14, 2021 Parma City School District Board of Education meeting. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, not another, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Ms. Lucio.
Ms. Roth.
Present.
Ms. Carpus.
Mr. Kreis.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Dr. Smilak, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
And you, can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting? If there's a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty may be addressed.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. At this time, information to the board.
Well, we actually have a special guest this evening, our state representative, who is really a very strong advocate for public education and just a phenomenal spokesperson with us. He always keeps us in the loop of anything that's happening in Columbus. He calls to get our inputs. I've worked with a good number of state legislators now in my career, and really Jeff is a clear exemplar in terms of how involved he is and hands-on he is with our school districts. So happy to turn it over to Jeff tonight, who has a proclamation for us.
Thank you for your kind words, Dr. Smilak. Appreciate that. And members of the board, appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening because I have a special presentation I'd like to make. You know, last year was very, very tough on everybody, right, with COVID, and we're still obviously dealing with it. But last year, when there was a lockdown, people lost their jobs, you know, what we saw was a lot of need in our community. And you all stepped up in lots of ways to help fill that need in the form of box lunches and practices for our community and our students. So I know that the Children's Hunger Alliance honored you for your work, but I wanted to take special opportunity to also recognize that acknowledgement and present you with the State House commendation signed by myself and the Speaker of the Ohio House in recognition of that work. And a little bit of background, if you're not aware, I've spent nearly 20 years now volunteering my time on the Board of Dorkers for the Hunger Network in Cleveland. So that comes from my personal experience. Being a kid raised by a single mom, we were often in need. And so I understand, you know, it's often hard for members of our community to ask for help, but having somewhere to go to get that help, particularly when it comes to hunger, nobody in our community should go hungry. And it really impacts how kids learn in our schools, whether they were learning from home last year or in our schools again this year. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all that you do, not just on this one occasion, but for all your public service. I know Board of Education members throughout our country have had a really tough go of it lately. And as Dr. Smilak said, I do try to be a strong advocate for public education. I'm a product of public education. I think I'm a testament to what can be accomplished if the resources are provided to kids in our community to serve them in a public education setting. And so I will always, as long as I'm in the State House, do my best to support you all here at the Board of Education because you're supporting our kids in our community. And I think this is just one example of that. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I'd like to present this to the board president.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I read some of this?
Yes, please, no means.
On behalf of the members of the House of Representatives, honor of 34th General Assembly of Ohio, we are pleased to congratulate the Parma City School District on being named the 2020 Summer Program of the Year by the Children's Hunger Alliance. This distinguished honor is a fitting tribute to the Parma City School District for it has aimed, attained, I'm sorry, a remarkable record in service to area families through its admirable measures to expand its breakfast and summer food service programs during this prolonged uncertainty associated with the pandemic. By securing grants, funds, with the assistance of the Children's Hunger Alliance, the district delivered daily breakfast and lunch meals to accessible bus loop locations, participated in the Parma School program, and distributed USDA produce boxes containing more than 263,000 meals to residents at 16 local sites during 2020. Indeed, the school system has worked diligently to provide safe and healthy options for the community, and its success is a justifiable source of pride for its valued administration, faculty, and staff. The Parma City School District has enhanced the quality of life for many, and its generous contributions have gained it the appreciation and esteem of all those associated with the institution. We look with optimism to a future of continued advocacy for the elimination of food poverty, and we applaud this leading Ohio school system for its unfaltering dedication to service and its tradition of excellence that has become its hallmark. Thus, with genuine satisfaction, we salute the Parma City School District for outstanding accomplishment and extend best wishes for the years to come. Jeff Crossman and Robert Cupp, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may add, you know, I saw that firsthand last year, right, when COVID hit. Parma went from, in March of last year, to about 500 pending unemployment cases at the beginning of March, and at the start of April, I think we had like 7,000, you know, which is about 10% of our population. And so I know there was, and obviously the unemployment system is still messed up, and we're working on that. But there's been tremendous need in our community. So again, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you all for your work. And I reflect back on where our schools were maybe four years ago or five years ago. And I think you've all done fine work getting us into a strong position. So thank you for all that you do in the community.
Thank you very much.
Can we get a picture with you in the best part of the boardroom?
Yes, of course.
Really, the person who should be standing next to me is Mr. Foreman and all of our lunch staff. Our nutrition services is phenomenal.
Well, they're not here.
Huh?
They're not here.
We'll take a picture.
All right.
Smile with your eyes.
One, two, three, and do one more. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
My pleasure.
Thank you for your kind words.
Thank you very much.
Your support remains a lot and is very much appreciated, not just right now with this, but all the time. You're always an advocate for us. Thank you.
Unless you guys need me to stick around, I'm going to go to my next event.
Have fun.
But I'm happy to come back anytime you guys need updates from the State House. I do try to keep Dr. Smilak and the board president in the loop on happening things. I think I could do that any time for the board.
Your communication is also wonderful. I get your regular communication messages and stuff. It keeps us very informed.
Happy to do it.
Have a good one.
Take care.
Thank you. Any other information to the board this evening?
We had our first quarter town hall meeting last week. We had actually 50 folks participating in some way, whether they were just watching or actually asking questions during the meeting. 50 is really a strong step up. What we used to do as a person, we'd have Frank. Anybody else?
I was there.
Frank was always there. And then maybe a few others. So, you know, I know some folks have asked why don't you do this as a person, but really the numbers kind of show clearly why there's just more engagement. People can watch from their home. And Amy, what was the total after? Did a lot more people view it afterwards?
About 2,500.
So 2,500 have logged in in some way to that, as it's still posted on Facebook. So continue to encourage people to participate in that way. It's a little bit more free flowing in our board meeting in terms of answering questions. And again, this is something we've committed to since we started in terms of improving our transparency in the community. We've had at least one every quarter in our four years together, and we'll continue to do that. The next one is December 9 at 6:30 PM. And so at that point, it'll be sort of the second quarter review and any district highlights that we would have to share. So lastly, we have our bonfire tomorrow. We've talked about this before. We invite anyone from the community to participate. I think it'll be, hopefully, good weather. It's showing 30% chance of rain right now. Obviously, you cannot have a bonfire if it rains. And so I'm trying to make that determination by noon tomorrow. We also have some food for folks, and we just hope it's a great community celebration. Whether you're going to the game or not, you're invited to come up and get some food and see the bonfire. And we continue to work to try to connect in different ways. We have the egg hunt, we have movies. We're again opening our hallways to walking in our buildings this winter. So we realize that, you know, as a public school system, we have the responsibility to be a pillar of the community regardless of whether you have children or not in our schools. And these are just different ways we try to practice that. So concludes my report.
Can you do my people where are the time?
6:00 PM at Byers Field, right on the Ridge Road side. So plenty of parking, obviously, in Byers Field vicinity. It'll be off toward the, I think, east side of the city.
Thank you. All right, anything else?
That's it.
All right, communications. Ms. Carpus, do you think I have him? Anything? Sean?
I don't know.
Oh, geez. Any amendments?
Do you not have any?
No amendments. Okay, public participation on, nothing on the agenda items this evening? Okay. Then approval of the Record of Proceedings. I move to adopt resolution 2021-10450. Approval of the written Record of Proceedings from September 30, 2021, regular Board of Education meeting. Second. We have a motion to second for 2021-10450. Questions or comments to the board? Ms. Lucio?
Ms. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
2021-10450 has been approved. And with Mr. Kretsch, Ms. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. There are, you know, topics, unless anyone has anything to discuss by the record, or nothing, I'm breaking today. I'm going for loop because we always have something.
Short meeting.
Wow. Business. Ms. Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move the adoption of resolution 2021-10451, authorizing renewal of active shooter workplace violence insurance policy.
Second.
A motion to second for 2021-10451. Any questions or comments?
One comment would be, this isn't anything new. We've had this in place for at least three years now. It's just another level of insurance. Obviously, in case the worst possible scenario hit, it's one more level of protection.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-10451 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-10452, authorizing purchase of IPAs for kindergarten, first grade students.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-10452. Questions or comments?
So a comment, this is not an addition. This isn't new technology. This is the technology that we use, but this is just not the normal renewal schedule.
Any other questions? Ms. Lucio?
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-10452 has been approved.
Unless another board member has any questions or comments, that concludes business for this evening. Mr. Schweitzer.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Roth. And finance this evening is Mr. Vaughn.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. So I move to adopt resolution 2021-10453, requesting advance payment of funds from the county clerk.
Second.
I have a motion to second for 2021-10453. Mr. Lucio, can you tell us a little about that?
Yeah, sure. This is for next calendar year. So your property taxes are probably due, I think it got to January 15. Usually, the county's not going to give you all your property taxes until March unless you request advance of it. So we're asking for the money they collected in January, give it to us in January. The money you saved in February, give it to us in February instead of waiting until March to give everything to us.
Is that a routine procedure?
It's a common thing. Every school district does it. They just, they require that we pass a resolution to do this.
But this is not like the previous practice we had where we would take like a loan technically away from taxes.
Oh, yeah. No, we're not borrowing from the future. We're just saying, the money you collected for us.
Give it to us when you collect it.
Instead of just saying, get interest and to us.
Yeah. We'll take the interest payment on that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Lucio?
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Yes, 2021-10453 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-10454, resolution to approve real estate purchase agreement of vice summer group incorporated, DBA discount drug mart incorporated for former state road and elementary school.
Second.
We have a motion to second for 2021-10454. Questions or comments? Ms. Lucio?
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-10454 has been approved.
All right, I move to adopt resolution 2021-10455, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-10455. Any questions or comments? Ms. Lucio?
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-10455 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-10456, authorization to accept activity purpose statement.
Second.
A motion to second for 2021-10456. Questions or comments? Ms. Lucio?
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-10456 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-10457, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-10457. Questions or comments?
So as usual, I thank everybody for remembering the Parma City Schools and being so generous to them, looking at better bargains there. That's a lot of books. I'm assuming that's at the elementary school.
Yeah, finders, journals, notes. That's a lot of stuff there. So anyway, thank you so much for remembering the Parma City School District. And ditto. It's, we love, one slide we like looking at every, every week. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Lucio?
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-10457 has been approved.
Unless a board member has anything else to discuss, it's open to finance.
Thank you. And legislation this evening?
We do not have anything today unless.
Can we talk about the backpack bill a little bit?
Yeah, okay.
It's just a very, let's use the term interesting approach to school funding. The backpack bill has been introduced and is being considered. And if the backpack bill passes, then Ed Choice and the Cleveland Scholarship Program would be a relic of the past as any student in Ohio would have the ability to take a $7,500 scholarship for secondary schools and I believe a $4,500 scholarship for elementary schools. So would that have anything to do with where you live, what school you attend? Clearly, there is a movement toward more choice. It certainly comes from Columbus advocating for the money follows the kid instead of, you know, tax dollars and property taxes going right in the public school system that follows the backpack, which is where that comes from. The issue is similar to the school funding formula, which was partially phased in, the money for the, it would be billions of dollars in increases in spending. So the money would either come from somewhere else or a tax increase or something, which is very unlikely, or it comes from public school system. And.
Essentially, it's just another big choice that.
It's, it's, it's the wild west, basically. There would be no, you know, right now, it's always.
Everybody is true.
The low is 20% of schools, or if you live in Cleveland, you qualify. There would be no parameters whatsoever.
Can I represent a bag in here?
Well, I'm fairly confident where Mr. Crossman would stand, Representative Crossman. But Representative Crossman is dramatically outnumbered in his perspective and party affiliation in Columbus.
Well, thanks for the explanation.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Can I just add, I did have the information on the amount, and the elementary is 5,550.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that's an even bigger hit, you know, for us. And.
The secondary, was I correct on that, 7,500?
7,500 is the secondary amount, yeah. So it's potentially a lot of money, and it would cover many more than Ed Choice has covered.
Right.
Yeah. So.
You'd also see an increase in new private buildings coming. The football team's trying to get jerseys out of my car. I was trying to unlock my car with my phone. So we would see more private schools popping up, not just religious institutions, but other private entities.
Very good observation as well.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Really, real educational topic in terms of legislation. Now we move to human resources.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-10458, approval of the following certified exhibits, confirmation of certified appointments, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, confirmation of substitute teacher appointments.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-10458. Questions or comments? Ms. Lucio?
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-10458 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-10459, acceptance of certified retirement.
Second.
We have a motion to second for 2021-10459. Questions or comments? Ms. Lucio?
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-10459 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-10460, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments replacement, confirmation of change of classified assignment, confirmation of classified resignation, approval of classified non-compensated legal absence.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-10460. Questions or comments? Ms. Lucio?
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-10460 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-10461, confirmation of classified administrative specialists.
Second.
I have a motion to second for 2021-10461. Questions or comments? Ms. Lucio?
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Carpus.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-10461 has been.
Mrs. Nance is here, so we'd love to introduce her. I just want to say a few words. This turned into a very difficult position to fill, honestly. We went through a couple different rounds of postings. I think that's important to say too, because I want people to understand, we don't just hire the best if it's sort of a weak hole, so to speak. So we were somewhat concerned. We've sort of shuffled some responsibilities. And Amy Vineyard, who typically works with Deb Manick and EMIS, has really been gracious to sort of fill in, but there's some EMIS tasks that we're falling behind on, and we definitely wanted to fill this position. So we went into our second round of interviews, and Jennifer walked in the door, and we tried to read the room a little bit. And honestly, I think 10 minutes into the interview, we just kind of wanted to offer her the job, honestly. But we felt like, you know, we probably needed to see the process through and, you know, honor the other candidates that were scheduled. But she was extremely impressive in her answers and her passion, and really her vision was a clear separator between her and the other candidates in terms of, especially that recruitment piece, that, you know, we hope that we can do a better job of marketing everything that we have to offer here for folks that maybe are making other choices. And I think Jennifer is going to be a real asset to us in that role. So congratulations, Jennifer, if you want to say a few words.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Hi. Like, as I said, I'm Jennifer Nance. Thank you for having me today. Thank you for approving me. I appreciate that. My background is in education. I have a master's degree in education. And for the past 26 years, I've actually worked in the healthcare sector in education, educational outreach, marketing, recruitment, retention, project management, program development. And I'm switching gears, and I'm excited to bring my talents to Parma City Schools and help you guys, you know, create the best school district there is. I do live in Parma. My husband and I live in Parma. My husband is a swim coach at Parma High School. So we are, we are local. And so we're looking forward to meeting all of you and getting to know you and working with you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Jennifer, thank you. We're excited.
And this is the position that was previously held by Mrs. Fulton, right?
Well, we sort of.
Well, a variation.
Yeah, we sort of split it back out.
But it's not a new, newly created.
So Mrs. Poppick has, or Ms. Poppick has more responsibility in terms of communications. She's really leading that.
Because Amy's the.
With Gary as well. So they're really the dynamic duo there. And then Mrs. Nance will focus more on the enrollment.
I love that. And I absolutely love that you live in our communities. That's incredible, especially for this position, reaching out to your neighbors and helping people.
You're welcome. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay.
Unless there is another board member that has anything to discuss this evening, that concludes human resources.
Thank you. Remind to Mrs. Roth, we move to policies with Mrs. Carpus.
Yes, we have two first readings today. This is the first readings of the following revised policies, which means they were existing policies, and we are just doing revisions on the old language, I believe. Right, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
All right. So the first one is policy 2230, our course guide. And the second is policy 6600, deposit of public funds and cash collection forms. And so unless anybody else has anything for policy, that concludes.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Carpus. Information requested by board members. Do you have any?
I just actually wanted to say one more thing about the legislation piece, and I apologize because the football team messed me up there. My brain wasn't going fast enough. It is so important that people pay attention to that bill because the ramifications of that bill is it doesn't come out of the state's budget, which will likely come in some way with, would it be a tax increase? And it comes out of our budget, it's going to result in a tax crease, increase on our end. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't be living within our means. It would mean that they took away more of our means, and we have to supplement it. And so I really want the community to kind of get a hold of that and understand what these bills kind of signify for them down the road. They might sound fantastic right now, but at the end, are you really, you know, when it all kind of breaks down, where's that money coming from? And so I don't think that everybody kind of sees that right when the new and shiny bills are out. So I really hope that anybody watching or meeting or here tonight really can dig in and do their research on that and, you know, kind of get the representatives. I think it's important.
Thank you very much. Any other information requested by board members this evening? Okay. Now we have opportunity to have questions, answers, or questions or concerns right into the record. If we have the answer, we will answer it. Otherwise, we will find the answer. I will read it verbatim. It is from Angela Palazzo. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Okay. 7001 State Road, Parma, Ohio 44134. "I would like to address the mask mandate. I would like confirmation that the level of activity while wearing the mask at school does not pose such a high threat of."
Hypoxia.
Hypoxia?
Yes.
"That I should be concerned for my children's health." And signed by Angela and David today. Do we have an answer this evening?
We do, and I'm sure it's going to address all your concerns. Mr. Vaughn said you have some information you might want to.
I did. I have some studies I posted. I'm turning it up for you guys. I want to say a question longer. I guess we worked at this school, the curriculum and everything, and I understand what situation you guys are in as far as mask mandates go. But I, because of these studies, I do have concern for my children's health. And I, I was just, I'm sorry.
You're okay.
Take it deeper.
These aren't like the random types of studies. These are full peer reviewed studies. And the biggest concern that I have about my children wearing the masks is the hypoxia because the inadequate access to the part of the mask that is changed. And from what I've been hearing, there's been a significant rise in mask carrying disease. And I don't know that these masks play each part in the whole, but there's, there is evidence that the surgical mask can induce mild hypoxia with low level activity, according to clinical trials.org. And Dr. Charles Patrick Davis has written that hypoxia will occur with any interruption of normal operation.